Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Thursday, March twentieth. To, uh, oh, Mike is saying he's not getting a light in, sorry about that. Uh, March twentieth.
I started, sorry, I just started the webinar, I'll bring him in momentarily.
Thank you. March twentieth, two thousand twenty-five at seven thirty-four P M. I'm gonna quickly do the roll call. Um, for Gia's sake, even though she can see everybody's little faces there, Dawn Cantafio.
Here.
Uh, Mike Boswell's trying to get in, so I see him coming up here. Okay, there we go. Uh, Rich Kroll.
Yeah.
Christine Illris. See Christine.
I'm here.
There we go. Um, I don't see Dean yet, I'll let you know if he comes in, Gia. Uh, or Ron, he's not here yet. Dave Gala. Is here. Uh, Kelly Malazi is here.
Here.
There we go, Matt Sather.
Here.
There we go, and Tony Silver.
Here.
All right, thank you, everybody, for making time for this. Um, this meeting is totally gonna consist of us, of, I should say, Tom and Rocco, and um, we also have with us George Estrada is here for any town questions, Dan Shopik is here for any legal questions, and as always, I see Cindy and Kathy and Vicky, um, should anyone have any questions that go beyond, um, what Tom is gonna go through. I wanted to ask him to do is just kinda really go line by line, so everybody really understands this, uh, different language that's, that some of us might not be familiar with us, with, and some may. Um, so I'm just gonna turn it over to him, have it go through, Tom, you want people to ask questions that are going along, or you wanna kinda do a run-through and then go from there?
I'd, I'd kinda like to do a full summary, and then, um, we'll ask questions, but I'll try and keep it brief. I know that the committee has the entire package. Um, I just wanna give a little bit of background history. So, uh, it's Tom Arcari, Principal of Q A and M Architecture, uh, Scott Swamp Road in Farmington. I have Rocco Petito here with me, my project architect. So, um, we're talking about the cost estimate process tonight, we finally have it, um, completed, but we've spent the last, I would say, three weeks, um, in a pretty exhausted process, um, to put this cost estimate together. We solicited cost estimates from three, um, three industry construction managers. Um, uh, one was O N G, one was PAC Group, uh, the other one, I won't mention because they did not, um, actually end up submitting. Um, so, we also reached out to our professional cost estimator, PACS LLC, gentleman named Tom Harden, to verify some of our cost, uh, reconciliations. We, we received a preliminary estimate from PAC Group, and it was X dollars, and I was feeling quite good about that. Um, and then we received the number from O N G, and it was X plus, um, five million dollars. So, seeing there was a pretty significant difference between the two estimates, we started engaging both construction companies, um, and juxtaposing their estimates, um, division by division, ultimately trying to reconcile the cost difference between the two estimates. Um, one of the very positive things about the two estimates was that of the twenty, approximately twenty divisions, sixteen of the divisions aligned almost identically. So, the reconciliation became very easy. Those sixteen, I, those sixteen line items basically were off the table, and we really had to reconcile four major, um, divisions, the first of which is site work. Um, the second was concrete, the third is miscellaneous metals, and the fourth was the plumbing division. There was a big, big gap in, in plumbing, from the sub-trade perspective. Um, the plumbing one was relatively easy to reconcile. Um, we brought the differences to the attention of PAC Group, and PAC Group noted that they missed a number of quantities and some costs, and they brought the cost up. Um, in the case of the miscellaneous metals, um, and the concrete, again, in both cases, PAC Group was below O N G's number. Um, they reached out to a number of different sub-trades to, um, get some pricing on the miscellaneous metals. It wasn't so much a structural steel issue, um, because we changed the design at the lower level to be C M U bearing walls with just steel beams, so the structural steel number wa- was relatively low. But we decided to build the building with light gauge metal framing, um, above the podium. So they reached out to N D C, um, Network Interiors, and, um, PAC Group raised their number to almost of O N G's number. The concrete number was a little more challenging, and there was a big difference between the two divisions, um, one of which was because PAC Group was looking at it as, um, as braced concrete walls, and O N G was looking at it as, um, retaining wall assemblies. Retaining wall assemblies are much more complicated, um, uh, more, a significantly greater or more, um, significantly more concrete, unique shape, requires more excavation, and PAC was approaching it as a braced assembly. So, um, we made adjustments to both estimates and went with the braced assembly approach, which reduced some of the excavation. PAC Group's number came up to within a couple hundred thousand of O N G's number. Finally, um, the site work was the one that took us the longest to reconcile. There was a big gap between PAC Group's number and O N G's number. Um, but what we discovered was O N G did a very detailed cut-and-fill analysis of the site. Um, they are a very professional site work, um, organization. Um, we asked PAC Group to do the same, and then we had our, um, site civil engineer do a three-D model of the site. Um, between the three, we determined that a blended cost of, um, removal for excavation, or for material to be excavated and removed was about forty-five thousand, uh, cubic yards. Uh, O N G was at fifty-two, but PAC Group was originally at, like, fifteen. So that's where one of the biggest discrepancies was. So, we had PAC Group redo their estimate with the adjusted, um, uh, quantities and rates, and brought them up. Then we had our cost estimator look at both estimates, and, um, now they were within a couple million dollars of each other, um, but the quantities were all the same, um, but some of the rates were different. And, um, our estimator indicated that, um, PAC Group's estimate was based on a prevailing wage basis, and, um, O N G's numbers or their rates, um, favored ultimately more of, um, uh, a current or projected unit, um, union rates. So, um, we adjusted the rates to go closer to the prevailing rates, and PAC Group made those estimates. And, um, we ultimately settled on a reconciled estimate from the PAC Group for the project. We feel very confident about, confident about their sub-trade numbers, um, and their full backup is included in the pack, packet. We can go through the full trade backup, but it's a lot of information, it's, it's about twenty-five pages worth of estimate information. But what I wanted to do was go through, um, the short line of their estimate, and, um, and then these, for the hard costs and then the soft costs. So I'm gonna share my screen, um, which is here. Think that'll do it. Am I sharing my screen? Or no, let's see, screen two. How's that? Can you see my screen? It's a title sheet.
No, Tom.
How's that? Is that better?
It's starting to come up.
It just came up.
There you go.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, for my conversation, I just wanted to point out, I have some materials. If we have any questions about design or layout, um, we can, um, we can refer back to these. This is the, the floor plans, the site plan. Um, and then here's some exterior elevation sheets, um, but I'm gonna focus on the, um, the budget summary today. So, the budget summary is three pages of PAC Group's estimate. You can see here that it's broken out by division, um, division one being, um, just general requirements, division two being some of the building demo and abatement and site work. You can see that the site work is a pretty big number. Of all the numbers in the estimate, site work is the biggest sub-trade number, um, at about four and a half million dollars. Uh, I will point out that the four and a half million dollars includes a half a million dollars of, um, allowance for rock removal. We're presuming, uh, a fair amount of rock removal at the site. Um, uh, concrete, couple million, masonry, uh, a million, miscellaneous metals, one point two-five, rough carpentry and cold form metal framing. Um, you know, division seven is thermal and moisture protection, siding, roofing, trim. Um, division eight is, uh, windows. Division nine is finishes, drywall, acoustic ceilings, flooring, wood sports flooring for the gymnasium, painting, um, visual displays at division ten. Um, operable partitions is in this, um, category. Um, eleven is equipment, division twelve is furnishings. Um, uh, division fourteen is the elevator, and then twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-six are the, uh, M E P divisions. Um, one of the things that I would point out that actually, um, was really good was that where we tend to see the most discrepancy in our estimates is H V A C, electrical, fire protection. Those tend to be really, really big numbers that have a lot of variables, but between, um, PAC's number and, um, O N G's number, there was very little differentiation. Um, so, I felt very good about that because those divisions make up a big percentage of the, um, estimate. There's some allowances, and then, on top of the trade costs are, um, basically approximately two point one million dollars in design and estimating contingency. This is about an eight percent, um, contingency, um, for design and estimating. In addition, the contractor is carrying a million, one point oh-five oh, in construction contingency. Um, so the way construction management contracts usually work is a project like this will have an eight to ten percent contingency, which will be about two point one million dollars, but there's a negotiated amount of the contingency that is controlled by the contractor, and, and the other portion is controlled by the owner. For the sake of this exercise, we've just split that, um, contingency, so half of the contingency, construction contingency is in the, um, hard costs, um, controlled by the C M, the other half is in the, um, owner's, um, soft costs. Additionally, there are general conditions, um, sixty to seventy grand a month, times, um, twelve to fourteen months, um, liability insurance, um, overhead and profit, um, and then some fees, as well as performance and payment bond, and then the educational stipend associated with the building permit. This puts the total construction trade costs at twenty-six million, um, that's bricks and mortar, um, and, um, some, uh, contingency at about eight fifty a square foot. One of the checks and balances that we, um, put on this is we look at other publicly delivered construction management projects um, in the, um, construction marketplace today, and we're seeing those costs coming in between eight hundred and a thousand dollars a square foot. Um, to put it in reference, the budget for the new middle school project, um, here in Trumbull, um, the hard costs are, you know, hovering at or above a thousand dollars a square foot. So, we believe that, um, rounded eight fifty a square foot is, um, again, confirmation that the sub-trade number is a good number. So, we take the sub-trade numbers, which again are the bricks and mortar, and then we add to it the soft costs, which are, um, generally called owner's costs or additional costs that are required to execute a project. These costs tend to vary from project to project, anywhere between twenty and forty-five percent. Um, this project should be on, relatively on the lower side. Currently, it's about twenty percent. Um, we start the overall project budget with the number prepared by PAC Group, twenty-six oh-one oh-one-one-three. For the sake of this exercise, I have rounded it to twenty-six million flat, um, just for clean numbers. As we go through this, then we start to add, um, owner costs. So you'll see here, land acquisition is not included, the property has already been acquired by the community. Topographic survey of existing conditions, that's already completed, um, geotechnical testing, um, we will need to do some additional geotechnical testing after we complete the testing that we currently have in place. This will give us a better understanding of the quantities of soil and rock removal. That's approximately twenty thousand. Um, municipal land use approval application fee is not required. Uh, environmental survey, phase one, was already completed. Um, environmental surveys, phase two and three, I say already completed, they should be not included, they weren't, were not recommended to be, um, accomplished by the phase one investigation. Um, hazardous materials assessment was already completed. I got my eyes on that information in those estimates today. Hazardous materials testing and allowances for oversight and clearances during the demolition portion of the phase. We've carried fifty thousand dollars. Um, this was informed by the hazardous materials, uh, assessment report. Um, building permits are included in the hard cost. Advertising is, um, five thousand. Legal fees, we have an allowance of forty thousand dollars for project legal fees. Um, bonding costs, um, we were given some guidance by the town to use a one percent placeholder, so we have two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, um, allocated for that. Builders' risk insurance is about a percent, we have two sixty-five for that. Architectural and engineering fees, we carried a six point five percent fee for this. Um, that's one point seven million. I, I will point out to the community that we've already presented a formal proposal for this project, um, a while back, um, that was closer to one point five, but I wanted to carry six and a half percent just to ensure that the, um, if for some reason, the, uh, community or the committee decides to go in a different direction, um, there's enough funding available to, um, procure and get, uh, architect in place. Um, owner's representative, this is, uh, owner's project manager. Um, it's fairly typical to see these on projects these days, it's someone who will full-time represent the town as a project manager throughout the life of the project. Um, this is something the town, um, will do. They also will be engaging one for a big project like the school. This is usually about two and a half percent. This would go out to, to bid and R F P, of course, but that's a pretty big number, it's six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That includes sort of clerk of the work and project management, more than likely would, um, happen, um, after a successful referendum, so it's, it's a two-year term of probably one and a half to two people. Um, testing and special inspections during construction, this is concrete testing and, um, special investigations. Um, clerk of the works, we did not include because that would be covered by the owner's rep. Um, utility company fees, these are utility fo- uh, company connection fees, gas, electrical, uh, and sewer. In addition, we carried an independent telephone and communications fee, connection of fifty thousand. Um, furniture, furnishings and equipment, this is a budget for new furniture for the building of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, technology and computers, again, this is A V equipment, um, for, and, uh, technology for all of the multifunction spaces. We carried seventy-five thousand dollars for moving and relocation to move the existing facility and staff and equipment over to the new building. Um, and then there's an allocation for drawing, reproduction and bidding. Finally, we have construction escalation to spring of twenty twenty-six. We are carrying three and a half percent for the year, that's nine hundred thousand dollars. I will point out that Turner Construction, um, who kind of sets the bar for the, um, contractors in the, in the region, Turner Construction is projecting two point eight percent escalation for twenty twenty-five. Um, we stayed with the three point five percent that is typically seen, uh, per annum. Um, then, I'm pointing out that the design and estimating contingency of two point, um, approximately one million is in the hard cost. Half of the construction contingency or owner's contingency is in the hard cost at one point oh-five million, that's rounded. And then, um, the owner's project contingency, um, would be added to this at one point oh-five. Um, so that puts a total soft cost at five point seven five million dollars, and a total projected project cost at thirty-one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, in summation, we think the process we went through to put this number together, um, was, uh, very professional. Um, we had a lot of sources of reference. Um, we went through a process of checks and reconciliation, and we feel very confident about the thirty-one, seven fifty project budget. There are a couple items we're still following up on. Um, for instance, um, today we discovered that the cost to do the abatement in the existing buildings will be about two hundred thousand dollars. So those are dollars that were originally included in design and estimating contingencies. Those will be shifted to line items, so design and estimating contingency will shift, will be reduced, and those costs will go into their own specific abatement line item. Um, we're still waiting on, um, the geotechnical testing, um, that will inform, um, our number of five hundred thousand dollars for rock removal, um, whether that has to go up or down a little bit. But I will point out that between design and estimating contingency, owner's contingency and escalation, the project has approximately five million dollars, um, in total, total contingency, which on the trade, on the hard cost side represents about a twenty percent total allowance for project contingency, which is a good number at this point. Most C M's are carrying twenty percent at the S D phase, so I feel good about that. Um, and I feel, our team feels very confident, um, with this number and that it represents the project as currently presented and designed. So, with that mouthful, I will turn it to you guys for any questions you might have.
I'm just gonna have people pop their hands up, and I don't have a full screen in front of me, but hopefully when hands pop up, you'll pop to the top, and I will call on you. And I see Mike's hand up and then Dimes.
Hmm.
Hi, guys, can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Tom, um, is there any way we can combine any cost with the Hillcrest project? Builders' risk, legal fees, owner's reps, anything like that, that maybe we can get a better bargain because we were gonna have two projects going on at the same time?
I, I think that's a great idea, Mike. I think, um, there's a real possibility there. Um, I don't know what the status of procurement of, let's say, owner's rep and special inspections and, um, builders' risk coverage is. Not sure about the builders' risk, because I think they'll handle projects independently. But special inspections and, um, owner's rep, obviously if you're engaging the same company, I think there's a possibility that would be, uh, efficiencies, for sure, because it's a lot more work. And, you know, if you're talking full-time staff for one project or full-time staff for the other project, then realistically, you know, maybe instead of four staff, it could be three staff, and they can share time. So I think that's a great idea.
Awesome. I mean, Lori, I, Lori, I have about five questions. I could just rattle them off now and be done for the night, or we can go around, whatever's easiest to you.
You know what, why don't, why don't you, um, do that, and then I, I'm just gonna follow up on your question a little bit, and, and I, I see Dan on here, and maybe if anybody town-wise, or I don't know if it's you, Dan, or not, can look into what the possibility of Mike's, um, suggestion was. But we'll have time to do that, but, um, that's at least something good to look into. But Mike, why don't you, why don't you go up with yours, and then everybody will have their comment. If we have to circle back, we will.
Sure. So we talked about the relocation costs of about seventy-five thousand. What, what is, what exactly are we looking to bring over? Because we keep hearing how dilapidated that building is. Like, wh- where's the great majority of that expense in the seventy-five thousand that we're bringing over to the new building?
Um, good question. I just carried an allowance for it. At the end of the day, I don't think much equipment is gonna come over, but, um, there'll be some computer equipment. I'm sure there'll be some activity equipment that's coming over. Um, but at the same point, I wasn't sure if the, the existing building was gonna have to be made safe. Um, you know, were there any reparations that were gonna have to be made in the existing building? Was a lot of equipment has to, gonna have to be disposed of. Um, so, the seventy-five thousand dollars is sort of an allocation, an allowance to deal with any moving costs, if there are any, any disposal costs. Um, if there's anything in the existing building that just needs to be removed, so the building can be prepared um, for what's next at the old senior center. Um, and then, if anything, has to be repaired or boarded up, or to make the building secure moving forward. Um, that's something that can be discussed further and potentially reduced.
Okay. Um, I saw one twenty-five for technologies and computers. Can you maybe elaborate a little bit more on, on what that inventory might look like?
Yeah, so, um, it might look like, it could possibly look like new desktops for the existing, um, staff that's there, but most, most likely, it would include, um, a computer and the soft library. It would be A V equipment and L C D equipment in all of the multifunction spaces. It would be P A equipment and audio assist equipment for the multifunction rooms, um, and the multipurpose rooms. Um, that's pretty much it. We're going, um, you know, base, we're just basing on twelve multifunction spaces at about ten grand apiece. Um, some might have more, like the big multifunction room to put in full audio assist and P A systems and, um, speakers. It, it might be more, and then the smaller rooms would be less. Again, that's a number, Mike, that's a budgetary number. Um, might be able to accomplish it for a hundred. We might be able to accomplish it for two hundred, so I'm carrying one twenty-five.
Okay, two more questions and I'm done. PAC Group and O N G, excellent companies, you know, I'm well aware of both. Do they have a specialty in this? Have they done any of these buildings in the past, or have you worked with them on a senior center, community center? Do they have a specialty in this? Have they done any of these buildings in the past, or have you worked with them on a senior center, community center before?
Yeah, so we've worked with PAC Group on multiple community center projects, most recently. They did a big addition and renovation for the Rocky Hill Center. Um so they've done this specific type of project. O N G does a lot of bigger projects and school projects. Um but they're in tune with the marketplace, their estimating team was exceptional. Um the only real difference at the end of the day, once we got all the quantities aligned. Um between the two estimates was really the, really the rates. And we just found that um O N G, you know, they tend to do much, a little bit bigger scale project. So that's why we got our third-party estimator involved to help us look at the rates. And and put the rates in a place where when publicly bid to companies. Um that do thirty million dollar projects on a regular basis, it would be, put the cost in the right place.
And and the reason for the question about the companies, let's say for PAC Group at Rocky Hill, just being able to know that we could pick up the phone and call Rocky Hill and say, hey. They they've done something for you in the past, you know, how how did it come based on their budget, were they on time? Uh were there any hiccups? How do you feel the process went? Just somebody that you can pick up the phone and call on. Just, you know, because when you're budgeting a thirty one million dollar project, you know, it's. It's a high risk, you know, you wanna make sure that you have somebody that that's been there and done that, that's all.
Good, and actually one of the things I could do there is um I've. I happen to have those conversations regularly because I deal with a lot of the O P Ms. So Colliers happened to be the owner's project representative on that project. Um and they've done numerous projects with PAC and they've also done numerous projects with. O N G, so I could find the common, common reference at Colliers who could speak to. Um both companies' performance.
All right, and just my final question, you know, and it and it's a gym question, but but it's not, you know, it's, it's a simple question. So, you know, I I understand, you know, you want the size of the gym and I've been, you know, proponent of pushing back on it. That, you know, my only recommendation is if you're gonna build a gym, I I I would, I would prefer to have seating. Right, you either build a gym and do it the right way, or you take the gym out, because it's gonna limit the things that you can do in there, and if we're gonna build something that big. You you know, you want something like, you know, necessary seating, you know, for instance. The question is, looking at line items, I see fifty thousand in equipment. When you're looking at that gymnasium, what's your fifty thousand dollar equipment cost?
Basketball, a couple basketball hoops, um um. And then uh basically just padding around the gym. Um it it doesn't go very far, oh, an operable curtain, curtain that comes down and divides the gym into two. Yeah, curtain divider, so. Um that's a number, obviously that comes out. I I am aware, um there is background sentiment to potentially explore. Um a reduction or alternate, our team is going to start looking into that.
All right, perfect guys, I appreciate it, thanks so much.
All right, Don, Don, where'd you go?
Thank you, I'm right here, hi. I just had one question, can you just define, and maybe it's a George question, the state education tax? I wasn't quite sure what that was.
I can do that, so. Th- this is a little bit of a, an unknown, um yeah, but. Most communities when they do um public projects. Um will waive the majority of the building permit fee, because they're doing it for themselves. Um but they can't waive the state education stipend portion of the building permit. So it's like sixteen cents per thousand dollars, it's a pretty small amount. That um the town can't waive, because they have to pay that portion of the building permit fee. Um back to the state of Connecticut, so that's what that is.
Okay, and like you said, most building permits should be covered by the town, right, because. You don't wanna charge the town when it's for the town, is that correct?
Are you gonna, are you gonna charge yourself for your own project? Some towns actually do. I am presuming the town will either waive the fee or it would be a negotiated fee. Um at this point, so if that's something that changes, then we'll have to uh address it in the overall budget.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I think Rich is up next.
Hi Tom, so uh one of my questions is for the costs that are not included in the estimate. Um are those still costs that we need to look at in some cases and. Specifically, it looked like we uh don't have appliances or food service equipment, so do we still have to build out a kitchen on top of this?
That's a good question, um we usually, one of the reasons the F F and E budget. Is a pretty high budget is because we usually put kitchen equipment in the F F and E. We're finding that um kitchen equipment is running about a hundred thousand dollars um for facilities like this. So that's in the F F and E number.
What's F F and E, sorry?
Oh, furniture furnishings and equipment.
Okay.
Pictures furnishing and equipment, right?
Same.
I guess they do have a kitchen over there that was renovated, kind of not too recently, right, so that means that they maybe have pretty good. You know, like.
It it's possible there's kitchen equipment there that would be viable for reuse. Um and uh you know, again, there's a moving, allocation of seventy five grand for moving. Some equipment, if some of the equipment there, like fridges and freezers are reasonably new, it makes a ton of sense to relocate it. Um I'd have to look at the condition of some of that to determine it, but um I I think there's some viability there.
Rich, I have that same question because it is relatively new, um and there was, you know, debate about whether it was a. Uh you know, what, just put it there and I, and then built something new, it was, it happened within the scope of when we've been working on this project, so as Tom said. And we'll look at what is available to move over and then uh and then reassess.
So um out, outside of that, then the other items that are marked um down in the contract. Are there, you know, items there that we still need to consider that are gonna, where there's gonna be costs?
Um as I mentioned in my conversation, there are still a couple things we're trying to quantify. Um but, you know, the two thou- two hundred thousand for the abatement cost, which. You know, wasn't in the abatement line item, that would fall under design and estimating contingency. The design and estimating contingency is established by the estimator to cover. Um items that just aren't identified in the schematic level set of drawings. So um as the you mo- as you move past successful referendum. The drawings will start getting more and more detailed, we'll start working out some of the technical challenges of the building. And you know, usually you discover things that, you know, really weren't identified in the schematic design. Because it's a pretty simple set of drawings, so um if anything's missed, that's what that contingency is for.
All right, and then do we have any costs, um you know, for like the town professionals, public works, things for that that are gonna be. Born by the town, but really part of the project.
George question.
I was just means, at this point, we don't.
That should be included or, you know, I don't know.
At this point, I'm sorry to interject, at this point, our budget anticipates that everything would be procured. Um and that the town would not be executing any sort of significant um service. You know, at the site or construction task. Um I guess realistically, there could end up being some small tasks. Um that happens occasionally on projects, but. Um even including project management, we have include budget for that as well.
All right, and small item, but what sort of advertising do we have to do?
Oh, so when you put the project out to bid, there'll be um some advertising requirements. Um it's, it's a s- it's a really small line item, it it may ultimately just get advertised on D A S. Um for the construction manager and the O P M. Um but there's a line item um to provide assistance for that task.
Right, and um obviously we all do less review of these kind of things and sometimes people like George, so does. Does George or someone in town, do they also review this for, you know, reasonableness and feedback?
Yes, we we have reviewed that, um and it's also been in our engineering department.
All right. Questions, oh, there was a line item there for weather veins? What are?
Oh, there.
What is, what is that for in relation to this?
Uh here, I'll, I'll share my screen for a second. Um good question, screen two, where are you? Um if you um look at the design of the building, we have a cupola. On the front entrance and there actually is a weather vane in the design, the estimate. The estimator picked that up and carried a weather vane. Um well, you know, again, that's.
I wouldn't care if it was a dark decorative item or if it was. Something else.
Um let me stop sharing.
Anything else, Rich?
They made some references to Saint Patrick's Church, was that just?
Did you see that, Tom?
Uh I did not catch that.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't know if it was the early name of. Of Grace Episcopal, they just, they, I mean, they obviously know which building they're looking at, but but there was some reason at one point they called it Saint Patrick's.
Oh, I'll get that, I'll get that taken care of.
Is there um any opportunity, like when you're um extracting all these materials, is there any opportunity to. Sell some of these materials that we're pulling out?
Which is. That's, that's a really good question, um hypothetically. Let's say the entire excavation is rock and there's a big amount of rock removal. Um some of the site contractors might plan on um sort of crushing. And then, you know, basically selling the product or reusing the product. Um the bidding contractors will factor that into their bids. So there's a good possibility that, um you know, site work numbers will come down a little bit if they can recapture some of the crushed rock.
Okay, and uh sorry, just one more, um on the elevator line, it looked like there was quantity. Two, but I wasn't sure what that was referring to, I thought we were having a single elevator.
Uh good point, I'll check that out, um I know that the amount um related to one number, so it must be a misnomer.
That's it for me, thank you.
Thanks, Rich, Christine.
Thank you so much, um so some of my questions I had written down before were asked, which is wonderful. I just wanted to drill down on just one thing, uh Tom, that you mentioned. Um in terms of A E fees, that your firm is committed to a one and a half percent rather than what's shown in here that.
Ooh, no, no, let me rephrase that.
Yeah, can you just figure, I just wanna understand that.
We submitted a fee proposal that projected our costs so that George could budget for next year. Our fee proposal was in the ballpark of one point five million dollars to execute the project. But for the case of this exercise, I wanted to make sure that you carried. Um enough fee at six and a half percent, which is kind of a median industry. Um area range for the fee, so I carried enough fee. That if for some reason the town went in a different direction, they could procure an architect to complete the project. Um if for some reason that's not the case, and of course, I'm very hopeful. Um that that's the case and I'm hopeful the project will be successful, then this number can be adjusted to the real number. And those funds can be allocated or removed.
Gotcha, understood, and you know, to what you talked about in terms of about five million dollars or twenty percent contingency. Baked across multiple lines, I'm wondering if um. That's just one of them, right, that's a small, that's a portion of an extra contingency, when you mentioned that, were you in count? Were you referencing this as well, as something that's, or not?
When it's, I I'm sorry, in reference.
No, just, just in terms of, you seem to feel really comfortable with the twenty um. Percent total contingency, which is roughly around five million-ish. And I was, just wanted to make certain that that particular line is one of the things that feeds into that.
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, perfect, thank you so much.
Good, okay, Ron.
Good evening, I basically have just two comments, uh hopefully informational. As far as the computers, there's only about a dozen computers currently at the center right now that are in use, that are there physically. The other thing is you're going to the kitchen. A while ago, if I'm not mistaken, we were into a little rig and roll, we did buy additional things for the uh, the kitchen downstairs, there's a triple well stainless steel sink. About, I don't know, eight feet, whatever, I don't know if that could be easily taken out of transfer. But the intent initially was to purchase things that could go into the new facility. Such as the um, the washer, the the ice bucket, the ice maker that's there, the two large uh. The one large freezer and one large uh refrigerator. There's a couple of a stainless steel island, if you will, that's removable, obviously. There's a stainless steel counter that's there, I don't know what can go, what can't go, but there are things there that are totally, totally usable.
Yeah, so Ron, just to, I wanted to clarify with that too, that was paid for by a state grant, so we really hope we can use it because that money did not come. Um you know, directly from Trumbull, so um but I think that number, as Tom explained, is in there. To see, we, once we get in there and see what we can bring over, then we'll have a better idea. But you know, uh uh why this is called a probable estimate and why it's, you know, still on conceptual plans is to kind of. We haven't dug into all those details that will come later after referendum, but you're right, we should be looking at all that, all of it is is. Really, really pretty new and should hopefully fit into the design, um so I I think that will be the ultimate goal and plan. And um but we have to, you know, kind of look into it a little bit further.
I'm sure the design will dictate it all, I mean, it may be for nothing, but it, well, it will be looked at, that's.
It's a goal, oh for sure, for sure.
Thank you, Tom, and Lori.
Yep. Anybody else? I just wanna make sure I'm not missing any hands. No, no, I'm still looking, I'm still looking, I'm I'm just gonna make a quick comment then, um. And um I agree with Christine, a lot of the questions that I was jotting down, people had asked, so I appreciate those good questions. Um when I first looked at this and. I think Tom has me blocked on his phone at this point, because I've asked so many, I've been bugging him so much, but um. And really understanding, I think to, uh you're, what you were mentioning, Rich, a lot of the N I C things and my understanding came to be a lot of it. Either it's already been paid for or is included in other, in other areas. And um really try, understand, I think Tom did a good job of explaining this tonight, is that these numbers are. You know, I don't wanna say guestimates, but the, what will balance in one will help, will may balance out in another, so. You know, at the end of the day, they may not be exactly what they come into, but the, with a big contingency like this and some hopes for some savings. Um as we look into it, that those numbers will change, but that we really believe that these numbers are. Um are really solid and that there's a good, you know, that the, the goal again is to stay under budget. And that these numbers hopefully give us the opportunity to do it as we're looking at it. Um as we're moving forward, I should say, Tom, I had a quick question and it was kind of following up on, I believe. Um what Mike was talking about a little bit about the gym, which we talk about a lot. Um and I I agree, I I'm, I'm always back and forth on the size of this gym, I'm not married to it. Either way, but I do thi- I do think ideally I'd like to see some seating, I know I've mentioned to you before about some kind of walkability somewhere too, so. I I'll, I keep driving home that these are conceptual plans, but you know, some of it is pretty solid, do we have some space? Moving forward to make those kind of decisions, like, you know, I'm not talking like full bleachers somewhere, but is there opportunities for some wheelroom? Within either this gym's plan or, or if that, that moves um into something else, to have some.
Sure, as the project moves forward, um we can modify it a little bit and maybe pick up. A row of seats, you know, a row of seats, I mean, there's not a lot of room. But, you know, changing, we've, we've, we've sized the gym accordingly. So cha- you know, changing it significantly would require making the building bigger. So cha- you know, changing it significantly would require making the building bigger and would have a real impact on the cost. So, yes, you know, we can move things here and there, um. You know, if you, let's see. Let me do this, hold on.
Sorry, I, I mean, I know that's something we can talk about down the, but I thought it was worth. Keeping it open at least.
So if you look at, um, do you, can you see the gym plan, the level of plan? Um, I don't have basketball courts in here, but. It it's possible that you reduce the size of the court a little bit. You know, we could shift this wall um a little bit. And pick up seats on one side, but, you know, you're not talking about, um. We're not talking about, you know. Massive numbers of seats, it might be one or two rows of seating.
Well, and that that was purposeful, right? We, we decided early on that. Creating a lot of seating was gonna bring in a a larger population than, than the neighbors would be happy with, and that the intent was, so. I just wanted to make sure that. I'm gonna say the pickleball word, I thought we'd get through a meeting without it, but if they're playing and somebody's waiting to play, that there's places to sit and, and. Like I said, some, some walkability somewhere in that building, that's kind of a set thing, might be a really nice idea too, so. Alright, uh, Don, I see your hand up again.
Yeah, thank you, um, I just had one point, is that some people brought up. That this may be an emergency shelter and that would. Increase the cost quite a bit, right, because there's structural changes that need to be done. Um, I just wanna make sure it is not in the plan at this point. Is that correct? And that if we did look into that, that would be more time, more work and a a different. Amount of money that would need to be spent for that.
The way the building is designed right now, um, it's. It's very close to being um, an emergency shelter, there are a couple things that. Are required if you wanna be a formal Red Cross shelter. Um, we did add um, some showers, there's one shower each in the men's and women's room, which the public safety director asked for. Um, we do have a generator, but we're proposing a gas generator. Um, if you wanna do a true Red Cross shelter. It needs to be an independently fueled generator, so that meaning, like in the case of some sort of. Massive event or earthquake, the, the gas line couldn't be disrupted, you know, you have a fuel that could be refilled. Um, and then there's a couple other upgrades. We, we think it will serve as a heating and cooling center for the town. Um, and for most events could be a temporary um, area refuge. Um, for the town, but the high school is designed and is purpose to be the town's formal. Um, Red Cross shelter.
And um, Don, that uh, that conversation came from Megan and I, I'm gonna ask her to actually kind of write something up and. Um, I will say that um, the showers, which, yeah, I think I've made it clear, I didn't really want people showering, but. Megan um, basically told us that if we put one in in each of the restrooms, then that gives her some opportunity to look for grant money. Based on them just being, um, I believe Tommy's the word refuge, I forget what her actual wording is, but with no intent of this being the town's. Full Red Cross shelter, but kind of a backup thing, and that may give us opportunity to bring in some money, which ultimately is. Will be our goal down the line with other things, but this was just one opportunity for some, for some grant. Potential, um, she, you know, she didn't see it as. You know, pulling in the cocks and all the things that, and you know, I know there are people who've said, well, why the high school, if, if we need a shelter, the high school's not gonna be open for. Students anyhow, so uh, the high school really is the ideal. Um, Red Cross shelter in most towns and definitely in ours, especially given the size of it, so hopefully that answers that. I'm, I'm gonna go to Rich and then Vicki, I think you wanted to talk a little bit about grants, so maybe we'll throw you in after Rich, if nobody has any other questions, but go ahead, Rich.
You said generator, I must have forgotten to write that down, but I didn't recall seeing the generator in the uh. In the proposal, so is it, was it in there somewhere, or is that?
Usually in the electrical detail, I'll have to, I'll try, I'll follow up on that.
And um, just one. Comment I noticed on the building demo when you added up. The square footage of the demo, it's thirty thousand square feet. Which of course includes basements or what have you, right, with some of these structures, but. I just thought it was interesting that. We're demoing thirty thousand square feet worth of building and we're. Putting in a thirty thousand square foot building, that's, you know, two story, you know, partially underground, right, so it. Seems like we're replacing one for one.
And a three for one, right, because that's the three buildings on the property, but you're right, they, they do total and with the basement, the, the thirty, the. Close to thirty thousand, or just condensing it into one, right, but yeah.
Yeah, I think the estimator rounded to thirty thousand, I think it's more like twenty eight and a lot. Or twenty nine and small change, but. Um, yeah, we've mentioned before that the footprints are very similar. Fourteen or fifteen versus seventeen um, of total footprint. And then there's basements and attic space and um. You know, mezzanine space. Um, and a shed, um, you gotta include the shed, so it, it's pretty similar, the amount of square footage we're removing and then adding.
Thanks for that. Rich, were you done?
Yes, all set, thank you.
Vicki, wanna, I mean, I know we're not sure, we never know about grants until our shovel ready, but I mean, I know that's where I'm gonna get a conversation.
Yep, just, just a quick conversation about possible grants, um, this is Vicki Tesoro for Selectman. Um, it is uh, premature to talk about anything um, for sure. Um, because you do need to have a approved project before you can apply for grants. But once, and if the referendum is accepted by the community, we will go out and look for grant money. Uh, from both the state and the federal government. Sure, there's, you know, the, I can't obviously, um, you know, say anything for sure, as I said before, because certainly we don't know what's happening with. With federal grants at this point, um, so, but with the state, we will be looking to our state delegation immediately. After the approval of this, of this project, if the community, as, as I said, approves it. And ask for um, grant money from the state of Connecticut, um, and as you will remember, we were quite successful. With Hillcrest um, school and getting a forty four percent reimbursement from, from the state. Uh, it works differently for projects like this, but nonetheless, it is a source of funding and we will actively pursue that. As we will with our, our, our federal delegation as well. Um, as, as, you know, right now, we don't know what's available or what's not available, but that doesn't mean we won't pursue every possible. Uh, place to look for grant money and, and that is, as um, the chairman said, um. There is some grant money possible if this is considered a temporary shelter as well, so we will. Of course, look there um, at the same time, so just to, just a heads up to know that there, there will be some offsetting. We hope uh, funding um, to this, this cost of this building.
I'm looking around, see if I see any other hands up. Think we're good, I mean, um. Of course, all of us would love a, a smaller. Number, the times don't uh, exactly dictate that, but nor will the future, um, as we've learned. Looking, I've been looking at some past. Um, over the last many years of budgets and that. Per square foot number will keep going up and not going down, we will hope that there will be some changes and some costs. And that we can um, you know, kind of look at some of the ideas that even came out tonight to find some savings, but. I feel confident that this number is gonna cover the building that we've designed and with that we've gotten behind and um. If you, once you start looking at some of the pictures that are, that they're putting together, it's um, it becomes a little more real and a lot more um. To kind of get behind, so looking forward to that. Um, I see Georgia Stratus hand up, so I'm gonna have him jump in and if any other of the town folks want to add anything before we. Close up, that'd be great.
Thank you, Georgia Stratus, Public Works Director, just very brief, I just wanna say thank you to Tom. He's done a great job in remaining flexible and re- responding to the direction of the committee. Um, obviously, there have been several uh, iterations of this project um, to date. Um, and all of those I know are, have been the committee trying to respond to the community's concerns. So Tom has really facilitated a lot of that, so Tom, thank you very much.
Let's throw out, throw out for our Rocco too, both of you guys have just gone above and beyond with. With all the, the whims, so thank you, George, for saying that.
Mike, Mike buzzed up a couple of real good suggestions, that's something I think we really need to um. Explore, because that might be a, 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 a pretty good um, opportunity for some savings by, by bringing these projects together. Um, and then just a, a quick note on uh, the discussion about emergency shelter area of refuge. It is a, it would be a, what I wanna point out to the committee is, that would be a tremendous asset to that neighborhood. Because obviously Trumbull has experienced um, extended um, power. Blackouts with us, major storms, we never know what's coming down the road. You have a fifty five and over community immediately next door. Um, if it's ninety five degrees and we don't have air conditioning for three or four days and we need a place to put people. Uh, where there's air conditioning. Um, it, it will be in the area that will respond to the needs of that immediate neighborhood um, in an emergency situation, so. Please don't dismiss the value of having something like that right next door.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense, um, I don't wanna keep to billaber in this point, because obviously we need to look into it, but. Um, I know the Hillcrest Committee, I believe they just picked an architect in the, out bidding, right, for. A contractor, so I, I guess, I mean, we, we don't need to, answers to this now, but I guess I need an answer, a. Direction to see how we follow through with that, I was gonna text Mike and say, see how we can follow through with this, but um. Perhaps George, between George, Dan, Mike and myself, we can kind of figure out how that works, you know, if they're already bidding on a. Contractor, does that limit us, and you know, what the legalities of that are, but.
I think tomorrow, I think the, the best course is going to be to, to uh, consult with uh, the town attorney. And the uh, town's purchasing agent. To see how that could potentially be packaged in, in the solicitation that's out right now.
Great, alright, so I'll follow up with you guys and with Kevin and um, yeah, that's a. That could be very helpful, any, any way to cut costs is definitely abs- absolutely a goal. Any other last thoughts on the budget, I have one more committee thing, but any other last thoughts and, again, I wanna thank people for. Coming on um, quickly and um, coming on from their cars and. Leaving work things, et cetera, to do this, I think this was a really important thing to understand this, line item by line item. And um, so that we can talk um, really clearly to it, right now, the. The, the plan is um, for us to um, head to the Board of Finance. With this number and um, look at a bonding authorization. Um, and continue to get everything prepared for town council for them to be able to make decisions, and that's obviously a piece that's, that they need as well. Um, we're pretty much shoring up everything else they need as far as approvals and, and those kind of things, so now it's just kind of piecing it all together. And have that ready for them, I did send you guys out some questions, we're asked a lot of them, we've already answered, so they should be relatively easy, but if anybody has any input on that from the committee. I'd appreciate it, just feel free to shoot me an email. Um, Don, I'm gonna let you ask your question and then I have one more reminder.
Yeah, it's really just a um, thank you to you for getting this all together and moving it together at such a great pace and for everybody's input. Showing up for the meetings, uh, town members, um, you know, different departments getting together. It really is a help when everybody works together to get this thing moving forward, it's a long time coming. As you and I have been on for ten years, so I just wanted to thank you especially. And everybody who's been a part of this, because it really is not always easy with comments and things going on in town, so thank you.
Thanks, Don, I appreciate that, although I often joke that, you know, there's been rumors that there were. Dead bodies buried somewhere and eventually it may just be mine, so. We'll leave it on that. The final thing for the committee is we are having a present, the Senior Center is inviting us for a presentation on Monday at one P M. As we described before, if there's more than. Five of us, right, more than fifty, there's six of us, that's too many, so I know a couple people have answered, I know Matt can't be there. I know, um, Christine, you um, offered to come, Rich. Myself, Don is still out of town, is anybody else that wants to be there, or anybody else who knows for sure that they can't, just so I can get a number? I was planning on being there, Lori. Okay, who, uh, Mike, I saw you pop up first.
Yeah, sorry, no, I'll, I'll be at work, I won't be able to come.
I figured, Kel?
Yeah, I would like to be there if possible.
Okay, so that, so far, that would be myself, Kelly, Christine, Rich. And uh, Ron, were you planning on being there?
I was planning on being, yeah, but as a senior commission rep.
Okay, so you're switching hats, okay.
Lori, Lori, this is Dave. If there's room, I can, I think I could be there.
Okay, yeah, well, if Ron is, is not there as our. Committee, then that, you will be our fifth. And if not, David, it's, it's not a big deal, but it's just nice to get different perspective when they're. Answering que- questions, so whoever, uh, if the five of us could get there, that would be great, I appreciate that, once again, it's one o'clock, that's already Monday, which I. Kept thinking we had another week, um, right now, I believe Board of Finance is seven o'clock on Thursday. And if that, anything changes with that, I will let you know, and we are also um, scheduled to go back to. Town Council on April seventh, as more information comes in about that, I'll let you know. And I think that's, and then it'll be our next meeting. Of us, whichever that is, that's so many in between now and then, whatever this. Wednesday in April is, um, but obviously you'll get notice of that. And I believe that's it.
Lori, if I could, it's Dan Shopik. Uh, there's no problem with more than a, with a quorum of the committee appearing at the Senior Center. The um, you'd say, uh, it's a um. Event that's being sponsored by the Senior Center that you're attending, worst came to worst, you have. Open a meeting of the, of, of this committee and uh, provide minutes, but aside from that. Um, ev- everybody can attend if uh, if they like.
Okay, I thought if we were um, kind of being part of the presentation, which we've done in the past, that we had to post it as a meeting, but. Um, I don't, we're not gonna hit.
You can always post it as a meeting, it's not, uh, you know, it, it, it's not, there, there's no, no harm done. But uh, anyway, we can talk about it, but.
Yeah, I mean, it is a Senior Center event and I'm trying to, you know, give them the ownership of it and not, um, you know, have that. Open to other, other things, but we, we should be in good shape, we should be fine, um, and. I believe those are all the reminders that I have jotted down, we'll follow up on some of these great ideas, I appreciate everyone's comments, if something pops into your head as you're. Delving deeper into this, please don't hesitate to reach out, I'll make you call Tom, so I don't have to. I'm gonna give him the weekend off of me, and um. Oh, Kel, good question, Dan, do we need to vote to move this?
It's, it's not absolutely necessary, but I think it, it would be helpful. If uh, the committee voted to, tonight to, so that the Board of Finance no- knows that the committee has endorsed. Uh, the number and the uh, and the project.
Okay, so we would be voting on um, the proposed. Probable estimate project costs to move forward as the bond authorization to the Board of Finance, is that what the vote would read?
Yes, at thirty one million. Do thirty one million, seven hundred fifty one if you want.
He rounds off for a reason.
For four, for forty nine.
Um, does anybody wanna motion that?
So moved, Don Cantafio?
Dan, can I get a second?
Seconded, Ron Floyd, don't.
Fine, any discussion on that seems pretty straightforward. For Gia's, um, I think I'll do a roll call, just so we know. I won't have to just look at, actually, you know, if you put hands up, I'll, I'll see if anybody's down, so. I'll, uh, if you could raise your hand, if you are in favor of this.
Yeah, Lori, you can ask for unanimous consent and then they would have to say something if they weren't in favor, and then you'd have to do a roll call vote.
You're right, Don, you, you're always so much better at that, I always forget about unanimous consent, alright, can I ask? Don's been doing this part longer than I am, um, can I ask for unanimous consent?
Fine, yes.
Yep, yep, anybody? With a no, okay, Ben. You're so moved. Alright, Gia, you got that?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome, alright, um, thank you so much, everybody, for giving up a Thursday hour and fifteen minutes and um. Thanks, Bill Chin, for making this happen, Tom and Rocco, as always, George, Dan, and our regular group of Cindy. Um, Vicky and Kathy, thank you for giving up your time and um, and Tama for a really great explanation of having us lay people understand this is much appreciated. Alright, we'll say.
And um, we should touch base uh. Tomorrow maybe, or Monday morning about um, the presentation.
I'll wait for you to call me.
Alright, thank you.
Have a great night, everything, good weekend.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.